We're within the octave.
Yes, I'm down with that.
Hello, one and all. Let me call a city council meeting to order Tuesday, 23 July 2013, 7:00 on the dot. I'd like to ask everybody, please rise for an invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Let us bow our heads. Oh Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to be stewards of your island. We cherish it in everything we do. We ask that you protect our city, its citizens, and our visitors as we enter the heart of our hurricane season. Please keep safe all those that are in our public service, as they are so dear to us. For it is in your name we pray. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marie, please call a roll.
Councilmember Vitale.
Here.
Councilmember Bergberg.
Here.
Councilmember Cannon.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Loftus.
Yo.
Councilmember Stone.
He's absent.
Councilmember Thomas.
You're here.
Yes, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Mayor Sonnen.
President.
Administrator Tucker.
Here.
And Attorney Officer.
Here.
Thank you very much. Reading the journals of previous meetings, we had a regular meeting on June 25th, which you have the minutes. May I have a motion to approve or amend? So move.
Second.
Any amendments, deletions, corrections? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Citizens comments. Do we have any citizens willing to? All right, Diane, please.
I signed up.
I know you did. I want you to beg.
I live at 15 Ocean Park Court, Isle of Palms, and I am pleased to be here tonight to speak about the Beach Access wheelchair that we now have available on the island. And I want to acknowledge the council for allowing me this time to speak. And I have only, I know it's supposed to be limited to two minutes, but I have about 10 minutes of prepared remarks. Does anybody object to that?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I have been, as you all know, the coordinator of the Isle of Palms Loan Closet, which houses medical assistance devices for both our residents and our visitors, wheelchairs, potty chairs, walkers, and crutches. And it has always been in the back of my mind that we should have something available to our residents and visitors that would allow them to go down to the beach. In other words, a Beach Access wheelchair, which is the kind that has the balloon tires. And I've long thought about this and never had really any resolution as to how to make it happen, because they are very expensive to buy. They're about $1,800, $1,900. And as luck would have it, or fate would have it, thanks to Administrator Tucker, I asked, I was asked to be a judge at the Miss Wando Pageant this past March. And this is how I met the young woman that you've already met tonight, Kenzie Jones, because she talked, everybody has to give a presentation when they're in this pageant, and she talked about her efforts to raise money for, to buy a Beach Access wheelchair. My mouth dropped, my jaw dropped. I was amazed, and that I was fortunate enough to meet her in this way really made me decide to pursue this dream I had, to provide such a chair on this island for our residents. Now, I know there's one that the county park has, but you know, that really is not very visible for our residents and our visitors. And so I contacted her, and we talked about where to house this wheelchair, that she, by May, she had ordered it, and it came in a few weeks ago. And I had, we had decided between her mom, and her dad, and herself, that an ideal place to locate it would be the Lutheran Retreat Center, because it's right across the street from the Beach Access, 20, at 20, where is it? 21st? Why don't you think I'd know? Because I live right there. But 20, 21st, and there's a crosswalk from the Lutheran Retreat Center to get over there. The Lutheran Retreat Center has a fairly large parking lot. And so we contacted them, and the director, I talked to him, Larry Hamrick, he was very accommodating. And to make a long story short, when the wheelchair came in, Kenzie, her mom, and I met at the Lutheran Retreat Center as it was being unloaded. And I am just, I am so pleased that we now have this. And I talked to Larry Hamrick yesterday, because you know, I wanted him to know that I was coming tonight, and did he want to make a comment, or I wanted to at least recognize him, you know? And he said, "I've had so many calls for that Beach Access wheelchair, and I think it's actually..." Tom, did you pass those out?
I guess.
Oh, please, you should have been doing it while I was talking. So...
Once again, you didn't follow instructions.
But there was, the article in the Island, last issue of the Island Eye News, that I wrote about Kenzie and her efforts apparently got a lot of response, because Larry Hamrick told me, when I talked to him yesterday, that they have loaned out that wheelchair every day since this came out. So I do, it's on page three, if you haven't seen it, and even if you have seen it, you may want to look at it again. So I just want to acknowledge this wonderful young woman who represents our island teenagers so well. Kenzie, will you, I know you've already introduced... And her parents are behind her, Angela and Keenan, and we're very proud to have you on our island, and we can't thank you enough for what you've done. And I just wanted to tell you all about a little bit more, someone called Kenzie. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, I think I speak for council. We're quite gratified that someone can stand up and do what you've done behalf of people you don't even know. People will use that chair, and will never be able to thank you personally, so in behalf of all the people who get a chance to use that chair and enjoy our beach that we try and keep so clean and precious, we would like to thank you once again. Thank you. Very good. Anyone else, please?
My name is Laverne Smith, and I live at 2704 Waterway Boulevard. And I just wanted to thank council for extending the hours on the beach for the dogs to be unleashed. It's just a really wonderful thing that you did. There's a lot of people that can't get to the beach as early to exercise their dogs, and it's really nice to be able to be there until 9:00 in the summer, and your wonderful extended hours during the fall and to the spring is just great. We have a great doggie park, too, which we love. Thank you very much for your efforts.
I don't know if others have had positive feedback, but I've had some, so I appreciate yours.
I've had a lot of feedback.
You know, it's...
He likes it, too. Benny likes it, too.
Thank you again. Anyone else want to address council while we're at this moment? I do want to remind council that at least on August 13th, we are going to have the flood insurance update. I don't know how better to describe it, the FEMA's change in flood insurance and all the regulations that are coming forward. We're going to do it at the rec center at 6:00. We've invited folks from Sullivan's Island. I think Mount Pleasant has a conflict that evening with their council, but they may send representatives, I don't know yet, but we'll be there and have an opportunity to listen and hopefully learn. Not sure we can do anything about it, but with knowledge, you know, when it comes to action, I hope, so. So that's going forward. The only other thing of note, I'll make a note in citizens' comments, if you're not doing anything Sunday, the 28th, just send Maria a note. She will be a year older. We're not going to ask her, we're not going to ask her anything further about that, but Sunday is a very special day in her life, and you know, you won't be here, so we won't be able to celebrate it with you, but you'll be in our hearts, so.
My daughter says I should be celebrating these last few days before becoming Medicare eligible.
The big reveal.
We'll make it birthday a week. This is a daughter you speak with frequently?
She used to, anyway.
All right, let's move on. No other citizens' comments? Thank you. It's going to be riveting. Thank you.
She has the wave down, you notice that?
Yeah.
How do you keep that crown on? That's a...
Doing good.
You still want to try on?
I'd break it if you know. I'd break almost anything I tried, so. All right, moving on, no other citizens' comments? We'll report on standing committees. I'll report on the Ways and Means Committee. We met on Tuesday 16th at 5:45. Our treasurer provided us our preliminary findings for the year-end of FY13. First, she noted that auditors will begin working on the 19th of August, work for a couple of weeks so that we can begin to finalize our year-end results. Her preliminary workup for us at the meeting showed that our revenue came in at 101% of our budget, while our expenses were at 95% of budget, so that gap is all positive. And so while she anticipates making additional entries, both on the revenue side and on the expense side, as we normally would do, recognizing both revenue that was earned last year, as well as expenses that were incurred last year, the bills are only coming through, she does expect that we'll still have a very positive result by year-end, and final year-end. And I believe, I'm reading the notes here, that she took the bold prediction that it'll be somewhere between $500,000 and $700,000 to the good, but couldn't pin her down any more than that. But I expect it to be on the higher side than on the lower side. In our tourism-related funds, we looked at where we were year-to-date. Our municipal accommodations tax is running 7% ahead, and we have one month to go, and we expect that to be as boisterous as it was last year, so we will have a good year-end on the accommodations tax. We've had no additional income from the, either the county or the state accommodations tax that should be coming through in the next week or two to finalize the year. Our hospitality tax is coming through, we're currently running at only 1% over FY13, our treasurer did an analysis, and realized that FY12 was, comparable period was somewhat exceptional in that we had one major provider of hospitality catching up on past due taxes, so we had a spike in income in the same period in FY12 that we don't have in FY13. But we're still running 1% in the prior year, so that's all good. Our projects were pretty well stable, no major activities going on in any of our project-related activities. We did discuss our debt, we did take in action. In reviewing earlier this year with our bond council, it was determined that we could refinance bonds, and two bonds in particular, two of our debts. The one in particular of note was the Marina debt, which is a taxable bond. And the advice from bond council was, once we had a principal balance of one and a half or less, one and a half million or less, it would be easier for us to refinance, it would be quick and cheaper, the expense for refinancing would be, would be just moderate. And in FY14, we are planning to have, by natural forces, have our taxable bond principal remaining at less than one and a half million, so we've asked staff and council voted, or Ways and Means voted, to ask staff to proceed with actions to try and refinance that bond with haste, that should save us during the remaining six years on that bond of up to $100,000 in interest payments. That was a step we took, and staff is moving on, I trust, as we speak. Relative to other businesses at hand, we recommended the award of a contract to Jones Ford in the amount of $24,934 for contracts, understate contract pricing for a budgeted 2014 Ford Explorer. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion and seconded. This is for our rec department, where the vehicle, if you read through the notes, seems to be falling apart.
As we speak.
So, any comments? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Thank you. Move on, make a motion to award a contract to Safe Industries in the amount of $27,161.53 for five air packs and associated accessories for the fire department. This again was included in our FY14 budget.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Okay. Any discussion on our air packs and their accessories? None heard? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move on to award a contract to T2 Systems for three Casio IT 9000E handheld ticket writers in the amount of $12,822. Again, this was included in our FY14 budget. I'll make that in the form of motion.
Second.
Motion and seconded. These are course our ticketing machines. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We went on and discussed the issues dealing with beach-to-beach signage. Beach-to-beach, for those who aren't aware, is an initiative to mark a route for bicycling from the Battery to the beaches, in our case, from Breach Inlet to the Marina. They have a, funds have been granted to this organization, I think it's about $100,000. I think it is $100,000, for signage. But in order to execute those, they are requesting that we, the municipalities, in this case, the Isle of Palms, establish the routing, the location of the signs, and ultimately install the signs after SCDOT permitting is approved. The discussion was whether we should have that provided to us, hire Stantec, who's doing our signage work, and take that on. It was decided that we'd go back to the Battery to the Beach folks, try and find some other way other than spending $3,700 with Stantec to find, find a method to get approval and get the signs updated. So that action will be taken forward back to the Battery to the Beach folks. There was a discussion relative to residential business licenses, really keyed on in-home businesses, the amount of income that was paid by in-home businesses. We agreed to look into how many in-home businesses there were, how much is being paid, et cetera, and what the results would that be before we move forward. If we were to move forward, it would probably affect all, review of all licensing that the city does, not just in-home businesses, but we'll take the first step and look and see how big an elephant that in-home business activity is. And so I believe staff is already working on that as well. So that'll come back to Ways and Means also. We went on to discuss the fact that there is an election coming up. We have an election due on November 5th, along with many other communities in the Charleston area. It was developed in the process that we are the only community that files by petition, others file by fee. The discussion was, should we change or nothing to filing, to move to a fee-based as opposed to a petition-based? And the decision was to stay with the petition-based. So that's what we'll be doing in this next election cycle. If we choose to take it up again, we'll do it after the next election. And we agreed to move to our next meeting on August 20th at 5:45 here in council chambers. That's the Ways and Means. Any questions, Michael?
Just clarification, I believe Sullivan's Island is also a petition?
Yes.
But not this, in this cycle.
Well, I mean, they just had an election, so we're not the only community that does the petition. I'd just like to make that, clarify that point.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, moving on. Public safety, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety Committee met Tuesday, July 9th. In citizens' comments, we have a citizen that explained that she was allergic to bird droppings, and she could suffer lung damage if she was exposed to them. That is in keeping up with the chicken, chickens on the island. We asked the chief of police and fire department for a recap of July 4th activities. Golf cart parade was a big hit. I understand there were eighty to 100 golf carts in the parade. This year, we had a couple of extra security guards hired to be in the sea cabins area to protect their entrance, because it was getting, being blocked quite frequently in years past, which seemed to have worked out well. And in addition to the city personnel, a highway patrolman on a motorcycle assisted with the golf cart parade, and we had six Charleston County deputies around the island helping with traffic and crowd control. Of course, we had our full complement of officers and B service officers out. And the island was cleared by 5, 11:15 after the fireworks, which, that might be a record, I'm not sure. The chief estimated the crowd, this area was a little bit smaller than in previous years, and he said the traffic count on the connector were probably within 1,000 cars of previous years, but the traffic count of Breach Inlet was a little bit, was substantially lower. And thanks to Mount Pleasant for helping directing traffic on the other side of the connector, shows that the communities can work well together, and that made a, has made a significant difference in traffic flow, actually over the last five weeks. The fire department also had additional personnel on hand, and they were divided between the beach and the trucks. One challenge that occurred was a lost child that occurred right before the fireworks started. Everything was fine, but when you get a crowd that big, and if a child wanders off, it's a challenging situation.
In the dark.
In the dark. And as you all know, we did have a wreck in the connector, so that, despite of that, traffic moved pretty good. We discussed the Battery to Beach signage, which the mayor covered in his Ways and Means Committee report. We also discussed the interdepartmental, intergovernmental agreement related to the Charleston County Consolidated Dispatcher, dispatch and Isle of Palms. And you have copies of that. I would like to make a motion at this time that we approve that contract.
Motion?
Second.
And seconded. This is in your packet, I'm assuming everybody's had a chance to read it. I'm going to ask the administrator just to touch on the highlights.
This agreement is consistent with everything that has led up to this, which is our inter- multi-local government, intergovernmental agreement with Charleston County and all of the other entities that are part of the Consolidated Dispatch. This is our individual agreement with Charleston County Consolidated Dispatch for the move that we will make, expected to make in October of this year, when our personnel will actually move to that location and begin operating out of that location. The fund, the financial obligation that's identified in this agreement is consistent with what we expected, it is consistent with what we budgeted in our FY14 budget. The only thing that's in this agreement that I will call your attention to is the town of Sullivan's Island's portion of this expense, which is 22%, 78% of the activity belongs to Isle of Palms, 22% belongs to Sullivan's Island, and Sullivan's Island will be paying that 22%. If for any reason Sullivan's Island neglects to pay, under this agreement, we are required to pay. I certainly do not expect that to happen, because then they would also not be receiving telecommunications services from Charleston County 911, and I don't believe that there will be an option remaining at that time. So I think it's, it is not a true worry, but I did want to point out to you that that obligation is there under this agreement.
Okay. Any questions on the agreement? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
We also discussed bannedet boats at the Marina. There are no pirates down there. We call the boats that are, for their illegally bannedet boats, frequently you will see them parked in the part of the dock that is reserved for the use of Born Creek Grill. And actually, since the way the leases work, we're not really responsible for those, or policing those unless we receive a complaint from the business down there. And that was clarified for us, so if we hear from them, we will take the necessary steps to work with them. Talked about no parking signs for Palm Boulevard between 40th and 41st avenues on the beach side with the curve and all there, and we've received some complaints from the residents there that it was hard to get out into traffic when cars are parked on the side, so the police chief will ask the SCDOT to take a look at that. We discussed staffing in the fire department. The chief has, is making a case to add some personnel, and we encourage her to go on and make her presentation, so full council could see what the effects of that would be. She'll first come to the Personnel Committee, and then we'll come to full council. We talked about the contracts for Safe Industry, 2T Systems, and we had the departmental reports on the fire department. We've had a lot of beach rescues. Personnel responded to several weather-related incidents involving trees and debris removal. They, along with Charleston County EMS, they responded to Dweezze Island for a patient experiencing an allergic reaction. There was a motorcycle vehicle accident at the intersection of Palm and 4th Avenue. A male victim lost control of his motorcycle while he was running from police. And I'll tell you right now, we don't do high-speed chases on the island, so it was a medium-speed chase at best. In June, fire department personnel responded to 136 calls, which was a 10-year record. Fifty-seven of those calls were EMS calls. Vehicle maintenance was a little higher, we had a boom hydraulic cylinder that needed to be worked on. And Chief Raymond Engineers Bowlin and Puck Arbor were involved with the US Coast Guard as they performed swimmer training off the coast of the island. You probably saw the helicopter off the coast, I think the mayor did, and he was relieved to know it was training.
Yes.
And I'm sorry, and police department, we had a couple of burglaries. We had one on June 28th, which was in 400 Block, Carolina. And it's interesting, because stolen property was recovered, as well as a significant amount of property that had been reported stolen by another, by a number of other cases in multiple jurisdictions. As a result of the work done by our officers, the City of North Charleston, City of Charleston, and the Dorchester County Sheriff's Office were able to clear a number of their outstanding burglary, burglaries. And other agencies are currently involved in the process of determining whether any of the stolen property might have been in cases that they were involved in. So as of this date, 15 burglary cases have been cleared throughout the tri-county areas as a result of our police. In June, dispatchers responded to 4,504 calls. Of those, 3,437 were for the police department. There were 444 traffic stops, 133 tickets were issued, 1,113 parking tickets were issued, officers wrote 177 reports for the month of June. There were 54 arrests during the month, 39 of those tickets were for alcohol violations. There were three citations written for noise violations, and two officers completed bicycle officer certification. The next meeting will be at 5:00 Monday, August 5th, in the conference room upstairs.
Thank you. Any comments? I'd like to just reiterate what I was... I'd like to just reiterate what I said before, but not publicly since we're there, thanking the entire city staff, police, fire, rec, Public Works, everybody who contributed to the 4th of July weekend and that extended period, really end of June into July, because we've had a great deal of visitors, most of whom returned home safely and having enjoyed their stay with us. I had a great fireworks, and it's really a pleasure to see the workings of the team come together in every aspect. So the administrator, you know, plays the music and everybody else decides what dance they're going to play, or the part they play in the dance, but it came out very well, and I know it's a lot of labor, but well appreciated by the citizens and everybody else. So thank you all again. I'm looking out here, but I know you're involved and you're involved and everybody else, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. I do want to make the comment relative to public safety that Thursday night between 5:30 and 6:30 is the next police officer meet and greet. And it's right at the end of Waterway Boulevard, I think right about 2301. So if you live in that vicinity, that's where you go for a meet and greet Thursday. If the weather's bad, they will not hold it.
Weather bad here?
In the afternoon.
Needless to say, the forecast for Thursday?
Partly.
All right, sorry about that. All right, enough of public safety. No other comments? Public Works have no committee meeting or any comments from Public Works or just carrying on?
Just carrying on.
Recreation Committee, please.
Okay, we met on July 9th, 4:30. As usual, the rec committee, rec department is very busy. Highlights of the June activities, Isle Palms Beach Run was held Saturday, June 29th, with 362 walkers and runners, 60 youth fun runners. The director stated that she thought as many as 12 states were represented. Challenge Soccer Cup is wrapped up with 17 children between the ages of 12 and 17. Total of 55 children participated in the Rising Stars Basketball Camp. This past month, the volleyball clinic was being held with approximately 40 participants. Twenty-two employees are participating in the Public Safety Department Fitness Training, averaging seven employees per session. This is with the passage of the FY14 budget implies from the Police Department had joined this fitness program also. And to recap, in June, we had Piccolo Spado Sand Sculpting Contest with approximately 50 teams participating. You can go to the website to look for pictures of the artworks. Camp Sunshine is about half-done, has four more weeks remaining through the July, I believe. The annual Employees Fitness Fair, this is a little early, but mark it on your calendar. The Annual Employee Fitness Fair will be Thursday, the 26th. Vendors are being lined up, and the director is working with East Cooper Hospital for blood work that will be offered to employees. We've already mentioned that we've ordered the new car. And our next meeting will be August 5th, 4:00 p.m. in the upstairs meeting room.
Okay. Any questions for rec?
Okay. Any questions? Did the, I'm not sure if you can answer this or not, but did the Rising Stars Basketball Camp replace the Anthony Johnson Basketball Camp or?
Didn't really replace it, but it's, we don't have Anthony Johnson.
Okay. Let's move on to Personnel Committee, please.
Personnel Committee did not have a regular meeting in July. We did, however, have a special meeting yesterday, Monday, July 22nd, to select members to the Employee Grievance Committee to respond to a recent grievance. Norma Jean Page, Douglas Kerr, Jason, and Jason Smith, with the alternates of Emily Zubin and Donnie Pitts, are being recommended to the, by the Personnel Committee. Personnel Committee would like to place this in a way of recommendation.
All right, we have a motion to staff the Grievance Committee. Motion seconded, discussion. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Marie didn't catch who seconded it.
I seconded.
Michael Jimmy.
The far end.
Someone does. Somebody does.
Our next meeting is going to be August 1st at 9:00 a.m. The next is the, I'm sorry, is the Safety Sweepstakes winners. General Government, Marie Copeland. Police Department, Cahill Lessiman. Public Works, Bernard Gordine. And Fire Department, Tyler Richardson.
Very good. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I should know this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Do we have a, when somebody puts in their termination, do we have a questionnaire that goes out and asks them why they're leaving so we can maybe improve?
We have exit conferences.
Exit, good. Again, maybe I should know that, but I didn't, but now I do. Thank you.
We still doing them?
We do them unless there's some reason why the employee doesn't want to. And sometimes I see this.
All right, Real Property Committee, please.
I'll do it. Real Property Committee, we met July 1st. Under your attendance. First item of business was the status of the Title Wave Dock Replacement. Non-caper of the Ocean Coastal Consultants who we hired is working on the current application. It has been delayed because Title Wave did not have a current operations and maintenance manual, which OCRM requires to accompany the application. So it slowed things down a little bit, but they were able to go through and get that taken care of. Mr. Schaefer indicated that he is about three weeks behind his schedule, but it's not critical of the overall project. It states that the federal permits will begin, to begin in construction as planned. The bid package will be advertised in October and November for construction to start just at the first of the year. He estimates the construction time to be in the neighborhood of about 90 days. We did as well have some discussion of the banned boats at Morgan Creek. I think that was discussed well by the Chair of Public Safety. We had some discussion of the status of replacing our fuel dispensers in this year's budget. And you recall, we're going through and working on replacing the fuel dispenser up there. The problem is, is the point-of-sale system doesn't necessarily talk well with the fuel dispenser. And if we go out and get a new fuel system, fuel dispenser system, it may not talk with the point-of-sale system. So we're putting out RFP, RFB on the basis that hopefully it will, but this is something we're going to have to cross when we get to it.
What does a point-of-sale system cost if we had to, if we had to wait until we had money for a point-of-sale system?
It wouldn't, the point-of-sale system wouldn't fall on the city, it'd fall on the marine.
Oh, on the marine.
On the marine management. And it's expensive, and upwards of maybe 20, 20, 20, 20.
I was going to say somewhere between 15 and 20.
Yeah, $1,000, perhaps. So, anyhow, but that's, we're still working on that, and I'm sure we'll have more report on it next month. Besides that, that was the end of our report, and our next meeting is August 14th. We had no motions to come on that.
Okay. Any questions for Real Property? Thank you very much. Reports of standing committees? No meeting from accommodations tax or Board of Zoning Appeals? You have the Planning Commission minutes? Any questions or concerns? All right, moving on. We'll go to item eight on our hit parade. Bill's already in your possession. So rec will take up second reading of ordinance 2013-07, our ordinance amending Title V, Planning and Development. Chapter four, zoning, Article 7 signs, City of Isle Palms Code of Ordinances, prohibit vehicle signs on parking vehicles, parked vehicles under certain circumstances, to provide exceptions to prohibitions on vehicle signs and to provide definition for vehicle signs. I'll move for adoption of second reading and to suspend the reading of the ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, please. Michael?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we send this back to the Planning Commission. I feel that we're missing some key things here where we go from a fairly structured ordinance that has been managing signage on the island for many years, to fairly lacking basically the recommendation from the Planning Commission, which moved forward as far as this ordinance, really doesn't, you know, manage the situation well, where we could have unintended consequences of vehicles and parked in such a way where it, you know, could be, you know, something that would not be favorable for the city or the residents.
Okay, you're making a motion to
I'm making a motion to resend this back to the additional review.
To defer until we hear back from planning, after we give them some instructions.
I'll second that for discussion.
Is there a second on discussion? Okay. And your point, you've made the point is
Well, my point is, the ordinance as written doesn't really cover potential issues that could be negative for the city. Okay, example, the number of vehicles taken up in a space. Okay? Doesn't take into account things, example, a, you know, the new grocery store could put a 40-foot, 48-foot tractor trailer there and park there, which I'm not sure if we really want to have that on a long-term, you know, park there. Doesn't take into effect having a separate trailer that say a business could use for, that would drag behind a truck and just leave it there indefinitely. So I just think it needs more study by the Planning Commission before we move forward as a city.
Other discussion, Barb?
Well, I'm a little concerned that the way I read it, I have a business license. So the way I read it, I could wrap my car in an advertisement for photography, put it in my driveway or the side of my lot, and leave it there day and night, forever. I mean, it's, it says, "Section shall not apply to prohibit vehicle signs displaying a business name, logo, address, et cetera, when the vehicle is parked on the premises of the business establishment it serves." Well, I'm just, my license is through my house. I'm just, I'm just a little confused because I don't know, I don't know how many of these licenses we have. Let's say 200? I have no idea how many in-home businesses we have.
That's not a bad guess.
Okay, so we could have
It's a reasonable guess.
Doug?
Just a quick comment on that. I probably should have said this earlier, but when the council initially talked about this issue, Councilman Stone brought up the issue that he did not like the fact that the existing code prohibits home occupations from displaying a sign. He felt like that needed some study. That provision to change, that was actually in the draft given to the Planning Commission, and they did not recommend changing that aspect of the existing code. So under the existing code, you cannot have a vehicle sign or any sign for a home occupation, and this amendment would not change that. So this change really does just affect the commercial district.
Yes. I'll get to Jimmy, but we'll see my lawyer raise it.
Well, that was my question.
Councilmember Ward asked me the same question right before the meeting, and I think a quick fix to that would be to change the word "business" to "commercial establishment" in that sentence. I think that would make it more clear that we're allowing those cars to park on commercial establishments. And the way that home occupations are described is that they're housed in a dwelling, so I don't think that there should be any problem with that. I agree with Douglas, but I don't think that that change is really necessary, but if you really wanted to show the intent, you could change that word to "commercial." But the home occupation ordinance is separate from this, and it does prohibit any type of signage. So I would feel comfortable going forward with this ordinance. I do not think at all that we're allowing it for home occupations bypassing this, but if you wanted to tighten up, tighten it a little bit, you could use the word "commercial" instead of "business establishment" there. That's just a suggestion because of the confusion about that, so.
Okay. So am I taking, Jimmy's going to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'd like to make, change it to "commercial establishment," deferring to the city attorney, because that's concerns of mine, as many people
So let's make sure we know where you're making this change, what
It's in the second to last sentence where it says, "This section shall not apply to prohibit vehicle signs displaying a business name, logo, address, or telephone number when the vehicle is parked on the premises of this commercial establishment it serves." I think that would help to clarify showing that we're talking about commercial establishments and not
So you're substituting the word "commercial" for the word "business."
Right.
Wait a minute, we have a motion, we have a second
I second.
Motion seconded. Let's discuss this change.
Was there a motion and a second on the original motion?
Yes.
There was.
Don't we have to take action on that first?
I think we've got a little bit of messy parliamentary procedure.
Yes.
Whoa, three motions. And we have a motion to defer.
So maybe, maybe we should finish on the motion to defer and then go back to the original motion, or withdraw the original motion and focus on the motion to defer, and then we can
That is the original motion, was it?
The original motion was second reading on the ordinance that says it exists.
And then there was a motion to defer. So let's take action on the motion to defer.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion and deferral.
And I read in the Planning Commission meetings that at least one Planning Commission member thought that Planning Commission should discuss it a little further, and I would like to give them that opportunity.
Okay, Michael?
Douglas, I'm sure your comments need to be recorded. Does the current ordinance, I mean, the proposed ordinance, does it limit the length of vehicle that would be parked stationary in a parking lot?
No.
Does it limit the number of parking spaces a vehicle would take?
No.
So example, a pull-behind trailer could take three spots and could position themselves there indefinitely?
That's correct.
Does it limit the number of vehicles a specific business could have?
No.
So one business could have 10, 10 cars decorated with their business and parked in Palm, so that's
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, and I guess, you know, I'd like the Planning Commission to review, you know, example, how many spots should be taken up by a specific vehicle? The length of vehicles, example, you know, one of the vehicles that came in question was Simmons truck, that's roughly 20-foot panel truck. Do we want to go over that length and let someone, say, have a 48-foot tractor trailer or whatever? And so I think there's some wide issues here that really need to be broken out and really discussed in detail, which I didn't see in the minutes of the Planning Commission.
Well, if I could just respond to that, and I'm not, I haven't read, reread the minutes to see how much detail there was given on that, but there was, there was a lot of discussion on exactly your point, that it is, it's a very broad, it would be a very broad exception. And it would, you know, and specifically the situation of Newton Farms having a large truck that could potentially be out there, that specifically was discussed. I think that there was, there was feelings that it was probably unlikely, and that they haven't done it in other locations that anybody was aware of. But they, they did, you know, they did go into a fair amount of discussion about, and it was not a unanimous decision. I will say that they, they, they talked about it for a long while, came down to a split vote, but all of these type details were, were discussed in a pretty good, lengthy discussion.
Could the liquor store have one of those pull-behind billboards, they advertising, you know, say Bacardi rum with volleyball, volleyball players or something, I just park it there on the lot under their jurisdiction?
I can't think of anything that would prohibit that.
Well, other than the language here.
Is there, is there a specific one?
If the primary purpose of said display is to attract attention of the public rather than to serve the business, then it's a violation. If you have a pull-behind, it's a violation. It's not there to serve the business.
Well, but if it's there to sell wrong
To advertise, advertise the business and say, bring people into your store, it's the same thing.
And I think that, to your point there, I would, we broke in, we broke down the changes in subsection seven to really two parts. The first kind of preamble really clarifies what a vehicle sign is, and I would say that the, the second to last sentence that begins, "This section shall not apply to prohibit vehicle signs displaying a business name, logo, address, or telephone number when the vehicle is parked on the premise, premises of the business," that's really the change. The part that you're talking about is, is really clarification, but I guess a Bacardi, Bacardi is not the business name, the business logo, the address, or the telephone number. Probably though, also to your point, it could, it could be their business name and their number on a big trailer that, that clearly wouldn't be prohibited.
Jimmy?
Mr. Mayor, I mean, this has been well discussed, well advertised. It really came up because of one small car, but we've had Simmons Seafood truck parked there for years in its normal use of business, and nobody's ever said anything about it. So I mean, really, we haven't had a problem except for somebody questioning one small, little, teeny car. And it talks about, you know, vehicles in a normal use of business, and I think it clarifies trucks and buses, trailers, other vehicles. So I think it's done, I think they've done a great job in their clarification, and yes, there's always going to be somebody who's going to push the limits on whatever there's always going to be somebody who's going to push the limits on whatever we do, but I think this is a pretty good attempt at trying to clarify that.
And if they push the envelope, we can change the shape of the envelope. We have to. Any other comments down here?
Yeah, I have to agree with Michael on some of these things, and some of the things that Douglas is bringing up is possibly when he's saying, well, yeah, that could be a problem, or, you know, this could happen with this, with the writing of this new ordinance or changing it. I'm not sure that I want to see big tractor trailers parked out there because we can't enforce it, you know, with a logo on the side, or just have everybody from the red and white parking lot backing their trucks or trailers up along Palm Boulevard. I mean, it's like, we restrict a sandwich board to their front step, but now we're going to allow a big tractor trailer, or a trailer to be backed up to Palm Boulevard just because it's in their commercial zone. It's, you know, I just assume, see the sandwich boards out there instead of the big tractor trailer. I agree, we need to have a little bit more, refine this a little bit more. I think it opened it up a little bit too much. There's nothing wrong with sending it back. You know, we can work on this. It's not a pressing issue. The fact that, let's get, if we're going to do it, let's do it right, and this is a great discussion that we're having, bringing these things up, and you being here, Douglas, and answering those things. But yeah, I agree that this needs to be sent back. Take our comments back, let them look at that, and like you said, they may have discussed it there, but they may even have more that we can do to it. I don't have a problem with that.
Well, sort of ditto. But just about the Simmons truck, I think the Simmons truck sincerely parks right by the front door of their business, it's the truck they use. If they parked it out on Palm for two years, then it becomes like a Mike Subs or someone's Subs on Coleman, that truck is always there right on Coleman versus next to the business. So I have no problem with the Simmons truck, but I agree. I think, there's no hurry. Let's, let's get it right, and we have to tweak. I think it's valid to tweak that thing about business establishments and commercial establishments.
Okay. We did the sign board in, I don't know how many months, this need not be any quicker. Any further discussion of motion to defer?
I just got one, and seeing it's been there for several weeks now, is Ron Davis's pickup truck. As far as I'm told, it hasn't moved.
Oh, it moves.
It did. Every time I go by that corner, it's sitting right there. And I don't, where's his office?
Right there.
Because I went around that building, and I didn't, never did see Ron Davis.
It's got a different name now. It doesn't say Ron Davis, does it? Doesn't it say Carolina something?
No, 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 no. Carolina one has moved in there also, but he's on the far end. He's on the far end where all the dust is, so he's parked by the street. Carolina's got the center two, and then the liquor store's got the one closest to the street. So if you want to know the lineup, I usually start at the liquor store.
You never get past there, right?
Okay. Now, it does move, Doug.
I believe you.
I haven't marked the tires, but I know it moves.
Doesn't move much, though.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion to defer? All in favor, please?
Let me jump in here, and could we clarify that the intent of the motion is to defer second reading and send it back to the planning commission?
Yes, yes.
Just for the record, to clarify against the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion, discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Outposed.
One no. Okay.
And you got a motion and second on the table, correct, concerning second reading, so the person making the motion and who seconded it, that could be withdrawn, then that would be good. I think you made the motion.
I made the motion, so I withdraw the motion, and the second was whoever.
I'm Barbara, if you want.
Okay.
What about Jimmy's motion?
We withdraw the motion.
Was it seconded?
No, it's seconded.
Douglas, just the only other piece of advice when it comes back again, you can change the word "business" to "commercial."
Got it.
You caught hold of that, I trust.
Got it.
All right, no other action on 2013-07 tonight. We'll move on to second reading, ordinance 2013-08, and ordinance amending Title V, Planning and Development, Chapter Four, Zoning, Article One, General Provisions, in Article Three, Landscaping and Tree Removal Regulations, State of Allepalm's Code of Ordinances, provide definition of hazardous trees, provide removal of hazardous trees in certain circumstances, and to specify types of trees that are subject to the tree removal regulations, and provide exclusions therefrom. Make a motion for second reading and to suspend the reading of the ordinance?
Second.
Motion seconded. Discussion on our tree ordinance.
Douglas, could you give us the definition of accessory structures? What could be included in accessory structures?
So that primarily, you know, what you think of as being damaged would be a shed, a detached structure. The planning commission spent a lot of time talking about what should and should not be protected. They felt like a pool should be protected, and that is, that is an accessory structure, so the definition there excludes any accessory structure other than a pool. So that would be shed, gazebo, boardwalk, garage, tennis court, volleyball court, any other type of detached building.
Okay. I'm not going to quiz you on a volleyball, beating a structure.
I just think that there's some pretty substantial garages on the island, and I would hate, number one, I want to protect as many trees as we can, but again, we have to think of property owners' rights, if they have a large amount invested in an accessory structure, such as, and I would specify, I would, I would like to add garages in. In fact, I would make a motion to amend this, to add garages.
All right, we have a motion to amend, so we have second.
I'll second for discussion.
Motion seconded for discussion.
What's the definition of a garage, Douglas?
Yes.
You know, our ordinance doesn't really, would you also, do you put a shed in the same category as a, specifically housing a car, I guess?
You've got some nice sheds out there, too, but I think garages are going to be bigger and probably more costly to the property owner.
Our ordinance lumps accessory structures together, and it gives about eight examples, and I think they're the, you know, they're the ones I, so it doesn't really delineate a shed from a garage. So, and I guess the primary difference is it's enclosed and it houses your vehicles, I think.
Based on, based on that, I can, I can go with this, but I would sure like the planning commission to take another look at it, because we've not had this problem with trees in the past, and the problem is, we've been here so long, everything's getting bigger. And I hate to see anything that's going to be damaged and a property owner lose property because of that. So I can go with this, but I would sure like the planning commission to take a look at those, take a look at that a little closer.
Are we withdrawing the motion?
If there was a motion and seconded.
Motion to amend?
No, I'm withdrawing the motion to amend.
Okay, I'll withdraw by second.
Okay. All right. So any other discussion?
Douglas, even with this, I mean, would somebody still have the ability to apply for variance?
They could. They would have to show they cannot use their property, that the tree is, and we talked about, you know, a tree going literally in front of the front door, and you, and you maybe could qualify for a variance where you can't, you can't reasonably use the property. I don't think that, and I don't know if you're talking specifically about...
For accessory structures.
Accessory structures. Only thing I can think of is that it would heave, it would heave the foundation, you know, you may have some leaking, but I don't think you could prove to the Board of Zoning Appeals that you cannot use your house as a result of that heaving. So the answer is yes, they could apply. I don't think it would, I wouldn't expect that they would be granted the variance.
Jimmy?
So Councilmember Vitelli is not trying to defer this back to the planning commission and look at it further?
Correct.
Would we want to take action on it tonight?
Correct.
What?
I have a shed at my house, and my home is less than 1,200 square feet, it's two bedrooms, one bath, but in my shed, I have all my theater lighting equipment, and it's very expensive. And if the foundation's on a slab, and if the foundation was causing roof damage and for the leak, I would have a tremendous loss. And I would just like for Mr. Vitelli to reconsider deferring it, to give more clarification like we did on the signed ordinance.
I think that was, his intent is to send it back to planning.
His intent was to pass it as is, send it back to planning for further refinement.
So we have, we'll take action tonight, but we may see it again.
Yeah, we're definitely recommending it go back to planning.
This will give immediate relief to anyone who has trees that are potentially causing damage to their residence.
One last question for Douglas. You said that garages and sheds and things like that are all in like one lump category?
Correct.
So this could delineate that?
Right, and that's, we've tried to do, pools are also in there, and in this draft, we've tried to make pools a rationale, or reason for allowing a tree to be removed, but then excluding all other accessory structures, and I think the fix would be to do a similar thing with a garage, where we specify that if it's damaging your pool, your garage, and or shed, I guess we're hearing that maybe broaden it to include those things, but still make it read so that if it was damaging, say, your gazebo, that would not qualify.
Yeah, because I hate to talk about my particular concern for me personally, but all that equipment would just be sitting in my living room all the time, because my house is so tiny. It would, there's no room.
I hope you have it insured, personally.
Oh, absolutely insured.
Mr. Mayor? Not to belittle your shed. Then you open up the possibility that so-and-so goes and buys a portable shed from Costco, puts it too close to something, and then comes back six months later saying the tree's damaging it. It just becomes problematic with the shed.
Then we're going to throw it at the planning commission, and they'll have to wrestle it.
One last comment, a very good point on that, but like, my shed is a slab. It's a four-inch reinforced, so it's a permanent structure. So I think it absolutely needs more tweaking, studying, tweaking, as you will. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a motion and second, a second reading and approval of 2013-8, suspended reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on. We're now up to new bills, resolutions, and proclamations. We have a resolution. You in good voice?
I'm in good voice. And the passing of this resolution has to do with the city's safety audit that happens every year, and our insurance company prefers that we repass this resolution every year to make sure we have it in front of everybody and remind everybody of the importance of safety. Whereas the City of Allepalm realizes that it has a responsibility to provide a safe working environment for its employees, and that each pursues the highest standards in his or her assigned activities. All municipal employees must recognize that the well-being of the persons involved in the protection of our fiscal resources are as important as the activity and work being performed. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Allepalm as follows. The city has established a safety and loss control program which is monitored on a continuous basis. Is the first segment, as a first segment of the city's program, a safety coordinator was appointed and assigned the responsibility of organizing the overall safety and loss control efforts. A safety committee was created to establish a loss control program, review losses and loss trends, make recommendations for prevention, and assign other safety responsibilities as needed. This committee is guided by the safety coordinator, and its members include each department head or designate. Each department head director will be responsible for the safety and health of the employees in their department, as well as the required maintenance of facilities and equipment in their area of responsibility. Each employee will be responsible for their own personal safety and for the safe completion of assigned tasks. The city requires its employees to respond to all planned safety efforts and to perform their assigned jobs in the safest manner possible. City of Allepalm is committed to doing all in its power to make its safety and loss control program a success, and expects all employees to assist in this effort by contributing expertise and by following all established rules and procedures. Passed and approved by City Council for the City of Allepalm, South Carolina, on the 23rd day of July 2013, Richard F. Cronin, Mayor.
Okay, resolution, motion to approve?
So moved to second.
Motion seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We're now opposite of the miscellaneous business, none to be brought before us. We're up to Tuesday, August 27th at 7:00 p.m. Hope you have a good summer. Motion to adjourn.
No. We have an executive session.
Oh, we have, oh, I forgot that. We're not adjourned. I have a motion to move into executive session to receive legal advice related to potential claims.
So moved. Motion seconded.
All in favor? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?